Good evening and welcome to the July sixteenth meeting of the Planning and Housing Task Force Commissions. I'll do the roll call. Doug McCracken.
Here.
Paula Kay.
Here.
Kathy Suggland is on.
Here.
She is. Michael Bender here. And Megan Juplis.
Yeah.
And Chad, Chuck, Chadwick. There's a Chuck, Chadwick, sorry. All right. With that, we will do the minutes from the May twenty-second meeting, twenty-first meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Yeah, second, I'll second, thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Any abstain? Very good. With that, we have a presentation about the Thrive Plan. That doesn't sound right, right? There's gotta be a better acronym for that.
Yes.
I'm gonna turn it over to Megan Juplis, Deputy Director of the RiverCog.
Thank you. So I don't have a formal presentation. Chris didn't think it was necessary as we've done the slides a few times at this point. Um, but today I'm hoping that we can get a vote to endorse what we're calling the Regional Transit Oriented Development Plan. We've been nicknaming it Thrive because it was completed as part of the Thriving Communities Program through federal DOT. Um, so this project was undertaken by River Cog in partnership with the towns of Old Saybrook, Westbrook and Clinton, as well as the city of Middletown. So ultimately, I'm going to be asking the River Cog Board to adopt the plan in its totality, which will give River Cog a basis to work with the towns on implementation steps, allow us to incorporate recommendations into our planning documents at the regional level. But before I ask for that vote from our board, I want to make sure that each of the municipalities that participated in the project are on board with what's in the plan, um, so that I can bring that to the board with your recommendations. So I am happy to provide a quick refresher on what's in there, what it is, if that would be useful. Um, I'm also mindful of everybody's time if you think that's overkill.
If you could give us, give us an overview, that'd be great.
Sure. So the, um, you should have all received the electronic copy, so hopefully you had a chance to take a look at it. I can also pull it up on the screen if needed, but I'll go through a little overview first. Um, the TOD plan encompasses three levels of transit-oriented development in order to enhance multimodal connectivity and promote walkable, compact, mixed-use development near the region's three shoreline east stations, as well as the Middletown Bus Passenger Terminal. We worked on the project over the course of two years with our consultant teams at WSP and Accelerator for America. Um, we had several rounds of stakeholder and community engagement in order to understand the goals and the visions of each of the towns and the residents and the business owners. So the plan consists of a regional overview, as well as a specific section for each participating municipality. And the idea was that the municipalities could easily isolate the information that they needed that was relevant to them in order to incorporate it into their own planning efforts. In each town section, we have existing conditions, which looks at the area within a half mile and a one-mile radius of the train station. It includes a zoning summary and existing use analysis, connectivity analysis for bikes, pedestrians, cars and bus routes, the pipeline of current development projects, natural resources and other limitations uh that would inhibit development, as well as land vacancy. It also includes a market analysis to help us understand where, how often and how much developers build. Um, this used CoStar data and showed the rate at which development occurred between nineteen ninety-three and two thousand and three. Old Saybrook had the strongest growth rate, but not the highest overall number of new units um of those municipalities that we were looking at. Um, we also looked at development capacity. So this was a soft sites analysis, looking at lots that had high potential for development or redevelopment. And this was based on the current use, the condition of building, zoning constraints, physical site suitability, neighborhood context, and also the market conditions. Um, so we looked at commercial, industrial, mixed-use and higher-density residential properties. We deselected sites that were deep properties, critical habitat areas, gateway conservation zone, um, wetlands. We looked at the transit access of the parcels and then that vacant and underutilized land analysis screening. We used tax assessor data to look at um vacant properties, as well as non-vacant, commercial or industrial properties that were um thirty-five percent or less built area on the lot. Then we did a visual screening for site context. We did a final staff review, in this case with Chris, to make sure that there wasn't anything we were missing on these properties. Um, and then we did that septic capacity analysis through N.L. Jacobson and Associates um to see the desirability. We ranked the soft site parcels um for desirability of development based on their capacity for septic. And then the ultimate recommendations coming out of the plan were um based on the TOD framework, looking at catalytic opportunity sites, which are large sites that have a big potential for change. Um corridor retrofits, which are basically the strip malls. And then the protected enhanced areas, which basically says Main Street is great, let's keep doing that. Um, plus, we looked at improved connectivity with the bike lanes, um, Main Street enhancements and intersection improvements. And then the plan ends with a series of implementation measures, which are suggestions for the town. Um, these could be incorporated into Old Saybrook plans. Clinton and Westbrook are taking this approach. They're incorporating these into their P O C D updates, um, which they're undertaking now. So that's convenient. Um, we are not in Old Saybrook, but we can evaluate that that's an option. These are here. Um, if that's something that the town would like to do. Um, there's also recommendations for the region in the plan, which basically says that River Cog can play a supportive role in facilitation, um, data collection and analysis, technical assistance and also um sourcing grant funding. Um, that's long and the short of it. Um, is there anything in particular that you would like to talk about?
Well, Megan, just to be clear, the Thrive Report has not been issued yet.
It has. So the um Transit Oriented Development Vision Plan, that's what it's called. Um, that's what Chris is referring to as the Thrive Report. So that's what you received. The Cog Board hasn't voted on it yet because I wanted to get the town's endorsements first.
Okay, did we receive that recently?
Yes. About three weeks ago?
Okay.
I wasn't the one that sent it.
No, I know that Chris was the one that sends it out.
Okay, so I'll look from Chris. I, I probably saw it, I'm just, there's so many.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't, um, and frankly, on the agenda, it says presentation. I'm not, I didn't even look at it, so I'm not certainly prepared to vote.
When Chris canceled the first meeting, no, first meeting in June.
Yeah, because both of the June ones, is that when it came out, when she said the meeting was canceled, but do your homework?
Right, but do your homework. And that's what she included, it was like.
That would be in the beginning of June.
Yeah.
Or maybe even end of May.
The June tenth is the same one I got the email.
Hmm.
So you're saying June tenth is the one I got the email, the email. Yep. So trying to find the link. Okay, so.
Would you like me to share my screen and I can pull up the report just to refresh memories?
Yes, please. You know, I think some questions, Megan, thanks for responding back to those ones, so. Yeah.
No problem.
Because Dennis had a question. And yet you did respond to that.
Hmm. And I did, um, I wrote those down to go over today as well, just for the benefit of all, so. Um, Dennis had asked, understanding demand for units um exists and has for some time. What suggests that the market and developers will respond to that demand with increased production? Um, my response to that was there's obviously no guarantee that they will, but the rate of development in Old Saybrook has been higher than most of the region and apartments in the region are not sitting vacant, they're filling up. Um, I deferred to some of the real estate folks on the commission, but I will say that um in a place like Old Saybrook that has high amenity value, the development is more about opportunities. So if regulations are friendly for multifamily housing and there's land that can be developed with a decent return on investment for the developer, there's no reason to expect that it wouldn't happen. Um, perhaps with a little bit of marketing on the town's part. And then, Mike, you asked the question. Um, yeah, hang on. You asked the question, um, when was the capacity analysis performed and the parcel identification done? Um, because a number of parcels on Mariner's Way have been purchased recently. Um, and so the initial capacity analysis was done as part of our SEDS in two thousand and twenty-three, but we did repeat the process last year as part of the TOD project. And because it looked at both um vacant and underutilized land, if there hasn't been new development on the underutilized properties, then it should still turn up. Um, and then you also asked about the federal financing. Uh, TFI should still be active as a grant program. So the end section of the report has potential funding um to enact some of these recommendations. Um, so TFI should still be active, but federal funding has been in a state of flux. So even things that say they are still available are not necessarily. We have, for example, at River Cog contracted obligated funds that we are not certain we will be receiving. Um, so state funding is a safer bet at this point. Um, so here is the plan. And it's linked, so you can see, um, we start with the project overview, TOD, regional context, how to use the plan, and a summary of stakeholder engagement. And then if you go to the Old Saybrook Plan, um, you have existing conditions, market analysis, capacity analysis and framework. So it looks at the zoning. It gives a nice overview of what the zoning is in the half-mile and the mile radius around the train station and a table summary of the different zones. It looks at the existing connectivity, the development pipeline, natural resources in the area and vacant, uh, the town parcel ownership, as well as vacant land available for development. Do you see on the maps here? Um, and then a summary of the opportunities and constraints. And then the market analysis and real estate trends. This is the regional analysis. You see the historic supply of multifamily units, the growth rates, same thing for retail, the cone of uncertainty, as it's called. Um, summary and then capacity analysis. So this is the steps in the soft site selection, um, zoning, environmental constraints, transit access, vacant and developable land screening. And then these were the soft sites selected. And then this map, if I can. Um, can't pan, but I can zoom. So they ranked on a scale of one to five the desirability for development based on the soil pergrates and absorption and how much septic capacity it has, which is something that's relatively novel at this scale. So that was a.
Do they do like soil tests or is that based on somewhere like modeling?
It's a desktop survey of soil types, yeah. So there would need to be additional testing, but based on the desktop analysis, you would at least have a ranking of which ones would be worth it to go on the site and take the soil samples from. And then this should look really familiar from the public engagement exercises. This were the video modules and I gave a presentation on this at a previous meeting. Um, all the recommendations are largely the same. I don't think we had any real changes coming out of the comments. So these should look familiar.
Then briefly the mock-up of what could possibly look like if we, if Saybrook Shopping Center was to develop some of the space.
Exactly, and it's just an example. You know, it's not prescriptive in any way, but the ideas in the catalytic opportunity sites, this would be an example of a large parking lot that has potential for infill development and the types of regulations that might allow something like this to happen on sites like that.
Hmm. Because currently that kind of not be allowed in B two, right? That is correct.
We finding improvements, intersection improvements. And then there's.
You say it wouldn't be allowed in B two?
Because the shopping center is in the B two, I don't think we allow any residential in that versus like what the B one or the Main Street, that's where we allow the accessory apartments like upstairs. So we'd have to, we'd have to change the zoning regulations for some of this to even be possible.
Hmm. And so one of the recommendations um in the implementation table is review zoning code, intercurrent designations reflect the plan vision. And then the lead agency for that would be the town. So, you know, in endorsing this plan, you're not adopting it. So you're not saying, yes, we will do these things, but you are saying generally we're supportive of this activity.
And both Westbrook and Clinton have signed on to this?
They are incorporating these into their P O C Ds, um, which they're both going through updates right now. Um, so the timing worked out nicely.
So I'm sorry, we're taking that as endorsement?
Um, they are, so Westbrook has, I don't have a vote calendared yet, but Clinton is voting August eleventh.
Okay. And what about Middletown?
Middletown is very difficult to get on agenda for. So we're working on it. You guys would be the first if you took a vote.
Okay. Well, I'm sensing that Doug and Paul are uncomfortable voting and I understand why.
Yeah, I understand the methodology used and it seems logical.
Yes, but you want to read the, you want to take a look at the document.
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
That's fair. Um, so I'll make sure that we get that reset out.
Okay, yeah, it is in the June tenth email. It, you know, hindsight's twenty twenty, it would have been good to put the agenda just a reminder and refresher.
Right, no, I agree with you. So I know we've had this presented in a couple meetings. What are the, any major changes to the document that we should, that we really should get into from the last time it was presented?
No, the only things, you know, in the last presentation, we focused on the framework. So the existing conditions haven't been presented since the very first meeting. So that's probably the farthest removed um from what you last saw, but it hasn't changed.
Yeah. So we can vote on first week of August? Yes. And we'd still be the first, so it's okay.
Should have never said that.
I'm a very tentative person.
And I will not take this to the board for adoption until the towns are happy with it. So if there is anything that you would like changed in here, it does us no good to have a plan that the towns are not on board with.
Right.
Um, so if there's anything that you would like changed in here, please send those to me and I'm happy to make the changes. Um, or, you know, if you discuss it and you say we'd like to endorse it on the condition that these changes are made, then I can subsequently make the changes as well.
And us endorsing it does not force us to apply it?
No, although I will say that we are signed on for um for CMDA, formerly the artist formerly known as Murda. So um that is also a TOD planning exercise. So having this already would be a helpful start for that program.
That's right.
And when does that start?
It's already kind of starting. Um, they're already gathering information. Um, they've reached out to all of the cogs to provide whatever planning we have for the towns in our region that are signing on. Um, so they're, they're moving.
And if I remember correctly, we have signed on, Old Saybrook has signed on.
Yes. Yep.
What are the initials for that?
What's the new initials, M R D A?
It's C M D A. It's the Connecticut Municipal Redevelopment Authority.
It used to be murder, but that's okay.
Yeah. Yep. Um, so yeah, like you said, um, the whole point of this was to make something that's useful for the towns. Um, and the reason the Cog Board would adopt it is because, you know, that will allow us to incorporate it into our planning efforts, like our uh transportation plan and our regional plan of conservation and development. And we can support implementation measures. We can go source grant funding for you, things like that. So that's why we would want it at the regional level, but there's no point in us pursuing any of those things if, if the town doesn't want to pursue them, so.
Correct. Now, I looked through this and I only looked through the Old Saybrook section. Is it similar for Clinton and Westbrook? I mean, do they sort of tie together?
It's similar. Um, there's a similar framework, but like we can just look at. Westbrook's is a little different. Westbrook is really limited in its development capacity. It's a really tricky spot for the train station. Um, so especially with their potential redevelopment of the outlet site that would take up a lot of their market potential as well. So we focused on making better connections between the train station and the um and the development site. But you can see, like, they have mostly very small parcels with limited capacity. Um, so their framework is more, you know.
Yep. Still that development that's proposed, I'm not a hundred percent sure where it sits right now. That fits right into this because it's right next door.
Exactly, exactly. And looking at those um improvements in connectivity ahead of time has impacts on things like traffic impacts and um, you know, and the parking and ability to get residents to the train station. Um, so potentially useful.
And I know Clinton has some decent parcels of land near their transportation.
Yeah, Clinton's, so you can see Westbrook, these are kind of their spread out sites there. Um, let me see if I can. Oh, we're here. So here's in Clinton, Clinton's is good. Um, Old Saybrook's was everybody's favorite um from the consultant team, had the most potential. Um, but Clinton was good. Sorry, my page up and page down are not working great. So here's their framework.
Yep.
Um, and so they have Unilever redevelopment, sidewalk projects, wayfinding enhancements, post office square. Um, and then their infill opportunity is kind of the CBS parking lot area around there.
Because I know there's property next to the Unilever property that A, they constructed one apartment building and I believe someone has purchased quite a bit of the other property.
Yeah, my understanding is that is in a state of no one knows where.
Oh, okay.
Um, but that may have changed since we last talked about it for this project. Um, but it was in limbo at that time. Um.
But I know the Unilever property is difficult because of its, just the complication.
Yeah. And I will say for um, for Clinton, because they're incorporating this into their P O C D, I've been talking with their planner about changes that they're making to the recommendations as they're putting it in their P O C D. So I am simultaneously making changes in this document so that they dovetail.
Okay. Cool.
Um.
Perhaps this is too general or broad a question, but I, I will try not, you know, having heard you talk about this a bit, but um without looking at the plan. What does it change in terms of Old Saybrook zoning uh streets? What are the mandated changes if this plan were to be implemented?
Though they're not really mandated changes, but there would be suggestions about, for example, reviewing the zoning to allow different types of uses like mixed use in the B two, for example, because it's right next to the train station. And with the form and function of that, it would be buildings with orientation to the sidewalk, for example, to have a front entrance. Um, things like street trees to make things more comfortable for pedestrians, that would be a recommendation. Um, you know, the whole concept of it is to make the area around the train station an inviting place to walk. Um, visually interesting, easy to access for pedestrians and bicyclists, that sort of concept.
And to promote the growth of housing in those areas, correct?
Yes, correct. Part of.
Recommendations to changes that could promote the building of housing in those areas.
Opportunities.
Thank you. Opportunities there. I think the idea is that that area is a better place to have, like more dense housing versus the seventy-eight thirty G that are like sprinkled all over town. It would make more sense to have it in this sort of like walkable area. Yes. We don't want to build an apartment complex in New Orleans.
Are there any um funds or denial of funds, resources based on not, for example, a particular parcel comes up that it it's not utilized for whatever purpose? No?
No, no, this is purely recommendation aspirational. Um, you know, River Cog has no authority to do absolutely anything. So we're just here to facilitate the towns doing things that they want to do. Um, and make recommendations.
How about, oh, how many lanes Route One is?
So Route One, there's, let me see. Where's the illustration on Route One? Because we do have intersection recommendations, but there's not recommendations on bringing the lanes down.
Versus something that's mandated or required or?
Yeah, nothing's mandated from us. It's just a recommendation. It's basically River Cog has paid to have these studies done and we get to benefit from it, from the recommendations that they're making.
Yeah, possibly we could um share this with developers. And if a developer looks at it and says, hey, I think I can pull this off if I could buy these two parcels, then things start happening.
And there might be some.
You know, maybe zoning needs to get engaged too, but everybody works together for a potential s- big solution.
Yeah, it's, it's really to provide the ideas and the thought process on what's the capability out there. And hopefully people do start thinking differently as opposed to, well, no, we're just gonna build, you know, thirty-two-hundred square foot single-family homes.
Yeah, like a big thing is, into River Cog's credit, they did the septic analysis. So right there, you can say, you know, well, will a courtyard hotel fit here? Or is it a residential apartments? How many apartments?
Correct.
You know, so you can, they've done a lot of that legwork.
And that's a big benefit to the developers because now they know that, okay, I can make this financially work. It's a start. And that's, that's the whole idea. It's planting that seed.
I will say, when we conceptualized this, you know, we had letters of commitment from the first selectman and the mayor of Middletown as well, um, for all the towns participating in this. And then we sat down with all of the town planners for all four, or city planner in Middletown's case, um, for all four municipalities, um, to see what was most needed. And then we took the. um, to see what was most needed. And then we took the commonalities from everybody, and that's how we created the framework for this. So the whole goal of it is to be helpful.
That was a lot of work to put together here.
Yes.
A good useful analysis of how it kind of fits in and because it's four very different
Yeah.
municipalities.
Hmm. Yeah, it's very frustrating at River Cog. We have sixteen towns and one city, and so I can't just say towns. It
Right.
It's frustrating. And ironically, our only city is called Middletown.
Probably can't call it Middletown, I guess it's in the AI.
No, they don't like that.
No.
Their city folk. Middletown city folk. Anything else? Any questions? Megan, okay, great. So like I said, I'll get, I'll talk to Chris tomorrow. We'll get this reset out. Um, and we'll plan on taking a vote to endorse or not on the August, I think it's August four, next meeting, so.
Um, I'm not exactly sure. I felt like it was the second, but I don't.
August sixth. No, Paul's got it. She's right. August sixth. Yep, August sixth.
And we'll share that table for the next meeting, please.
No, we don't.
What's not on the agenda?
True. Right.
There's no.
There's no page that would not have been on the agenda. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. The rest of the agenda, the housing task force, I don't think there's anything for us to talk about. The survey is out. I don't know what's really going on with that.
Is that, I mean, did I miss any mail? I didn't see it, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't know how it was being sent out.
Okay.
It should have been emailed to all of us, but I'll make sure of that.
I'm uncertain if it's completed.
Oh, I thought it was. Oh, maybe it's not.
We're in the process. I, the question, I'm not positive, but I'm pretty sure it's not ready to.
Okay, I knew we were done with the development of the questions and the format and stuff like that. So I guess we're just waiting for it to get finalized.
Potentially.
But the intent was for that to go out like to the whole town, you know?
Yes. And then, you know, like similar to the uh, survey around uh, changes at the police department that's been on the website.
So you subscribe to the website to get emails from the town.
Yeah, okay. So I'll check on that. And then, um, there's no staff reports because there's, um, you don't have any reports, you aren't.
I don't know.
No, okay. I didn't think so. Um, any committee reports? They're rather quiet.
I'll, I'll just state, I mentioned last time, you know, on the Mariners way, I had hot committee, we're just getting going. But we are le- going to leverage everything Megan did in that area.
Yeah.
You know, she's got us, gave us the septic capability, you know, so it's very, very useful, uh, analysis and data that they've accumulated.
So in Mariners way, the two large parcels are basically temporarily
tied.
Tied on.
Use, right, for six years or so.
So then, bridge, the new train bridge.
Yes.
Okay.
But actually, you know, I think it looks good when those buildings not.
Yes, and it just like. It looks a little bit better. I I mean, it's a big parking lot there.
There's a lot going on there. There's a lot of businesses, a lot of activities, so.
Do you know if the development behind um, or right next to New England Power Company is affiliated with all that? There looks like there's an electrical contractor who built.
I don't know. I don't know details. I assumed all that activity was associated.
All associated, yeah, okay.
I don't know.
All right. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
I'll take a second. I'll say it. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstains? Thank you. Thank you, Megan. Thank you. Thanks, Megan.
Thank you very much.